Okay.
So move.
All right.
And second, Irene. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion passes. And so we have our program presentation, Mike.
Okay. We're gonna have Angelique Johnson-Dingle, our district superintendent, also oversees the operation of Division of Instructional Support. They provide many different services for our school districts. And one of the services that they provide is enrollment studies that the board is somewhat familiar with. It's a very useful tool that school districts use, particularly school districts who are experiencing situations where they might have to have a reduced enrollment situation, or they're looking for increased enrollment. And they take a look at this enrollment study. So Angelique, would you mind commencing with your program presentation on your enrollment study, the Bye County Enrollment Study?
Hello, good evening to everyone. This evening I would just like to talk a little bit about the annual Bye County enrollment report that is produced out of the planning department within the Division of Instructional Support Services. If you see me look down, I'm just reading my notes, so please forgive me. Essentially every year we provide this as a free service just to help inform the field and keep them abreast of what enrollment looks like in our, in our school districts. During the month of May, we traditionally publish a report that looks at enrollment within Western Suffolk Bocees. But then we choose to take it a step further and provide a report that looks at enrollment in Nassau County and Suffolk County. And essentially what we have found, based upon the data, is that we could view to see a decline in our public school enrollment by about 4.1% since 2013. We're looking at decreases of 1.2% in Nassau County and 6.5% in Suffolk County. Projections suggest that an additional 1.8 decline in the region over the next three years. And essentially the reasons why we continue to see the decline is because essentially our schools are graduating larger 12th grade classes than they are bringing in in smaller kindergarten classes. And although we have seen a little bit of an uptick in the housing market recently, it's still not enough to kind of replace those students who are graduating from our schools. Another contributing factor to the decline is that we see that there are less births across the entire region, which then has a direct impact on the number of students that would be entering our schools. On another side of this, we have seen an increase due to immigration in some of our districts. So districts like an Amityville, in a Copec, in a Wyandance have seen recent increases in their enrollment. However, again, it's still not enough to kind of compare with the students that are graduating. Overall, this is a tool, again, that we provide to the public free of charge, and it's posted on our website for every and anyone to take a look at. And we're happy to be able to provide such a valuable service for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I do, or actually I have a comment. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because my picture's not up. I'll make the same comment I've made the last few years. And I still believe part of the problem is that those of us who are senior citizens.
The meeting, I can't talk.
Those of us who are senior citizens.
Okay, call Melissa.
Do not find affordable, cheaper housing and continue to live in our houses without selling it. So that's one of the reasons you're not getting the increase of the younger families.
Yeah. I agree with you.
Yeah, I will say, I believe it was Hofstra that did a study that took a look at that and did some, some, some analysis on the impact of the housing, just the cost of housing in general on Long Island and how it is harder sometimes for younger families to move in just due to the expensive nature of our homes here. So I, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Angelique.
Also a lot of resistance to affordable housing.
Yeah.
And all communities don't want affordable housing and they don't want children. You know, we see it going on all over.
We're getting a little feedback, Irene, on your phone, being so close, so. We're getting a little feedback, Eileen, on your phone being so close, so. You know, Angelique, good work and you and your team, every year we say the same thing. That is valuable data that we share with many districts across, I guess, all over Long Island and New York State. So good work and that's always good data to say, thank you. All right, so we're gonna acknowledge the Treasurers' Report and the Claims Auditor's Report. And then we'll move back to our Executive Offices Report and right back to our District Superintendent, Angelique.
Okay, good evening. There are two, two items that I would like to just share with you that have come out of State Ed. And although they were hot topics earlier last week, they're not so hot because there have been some executive orders that have come out recently. But one of the things that I did wanna just point out is that the New York State Education Department did release guidance and the ability for any parent who has a child that would automatically graduate because of the cancellation of the Regents' Exams. Parents now do have that right where they could waive that free eligibility of Regents' Exams that would, that would have students graduate. And that information has been shared with all of our districts. They do have to provide parents with a notice. And that notice has to be provided, I think it is up to 10 days before a student would receive a diploma. And essentially what that would do is give the student the ability to come back to school the following year. But they obviously would still have to take those Regents' Exams in order to meet the graduation requirements moving forward. The other thing that, that the State Education Department has released is a digital equity survey. The state is trying to get a handle on what the digital divide could possibly be among our students in our schools. Given this outbreak, we were all kinds of rushed into providing distance learning. And some of our students did not have access to devices to, to participate in distance learning effectively. So the State Education Department has released a survey for each school district to complete and to send back to the state so that way we can take a look at overall how we can better prepare our students if we are ever in this situation in the future. So those are my two topics for this evening.
Great.
I just had a question.
Yes.
Does that survey include the Smart Bond? A question on the Smart Bond and funding that would have helped us be better prepared?
Very good.
So the, so here's the, so the Smart Bond, so the Smart, Smart Bond Funds, I think that was released back in 2014, if I remember correctly. And, and districts had, had an option of what they would be able to use that funding for. And because they had those options, they didn't necessarily have to solely use it to purchase devices for students. Some districts may have used it for security upgrades or in other, or in other topics that were allowable with the funding. But I think given the circumstances that we have seen with this pandemic, I think it kind of pushes the issue in the envelope that, you know, that we're going to have to provide devices for, for our students. Because if, if this comes around again, we should, you know, we want, we would like to be better prepared to make sure that our, to make sure that our children can continue learning.
Thank you. Any other comments? Great, Mike?
Okay, thank you. So a, a, a real challenge this June for all districts throughout New York State has really been trying to tackle the issue of graduation ceremonies. We all remember that, you know, we look back, what are the events we're born our life? And the students are really heartbroken that they're not gonna be able to gather together with their colleagues one last time. And to be able to celebrate their high school experience and for families to join in that celebration. So with respect to Western Suffolk Bosse's, I'm so appreciative of all the staff. Everyone has pitched in to try and make this a memorable and special event for our graduates. So within the Career and Technical Education Division, we serve 1,950 students. Out of those students, we have a little over 700 graduates. So the staff has gotten together. We've created a virtual ceremony of memories. It's a collage of pictures of events that's been collected over the past year. A lot of effort, weight put together, put this collage together. And it's gonna be shown to our students and to their families. In addition to that, the Career and Technical Ed Division spread over four campuses, the Wilson Tech four campuses. We're gonna have a drive-in, drive-by ceremony where all the students are going to be able to drive in with their families. They will not be able to get out of the car. We will practice the, the social distancing and the limits of having no more than 10 staff members available at the time. But what we tried to do was to schedule this in such a fashion that all the teachers who were in a specific technical area are together. So for example, our three carpentry teachers are gonna be together and we're gonna have just the carpentry students drive by with their families to be recognized. They'll get their diplomas, certificates. I recently sent the board an impressive list of all the scholarships that we're gonna give to the students and make it special. So at least all the 38 different programs that are offered to high school students in tech will be represented over the four campuses in this drive-in parade. And it'll be managed and scheduled in such a fashion where it's safely organized. In a similar situation for special ed, we have four high school graduations. We have a middle school moving up and an elementary moving up. And we, we've done the same thing. We have a virtual collage that we put together by staff for the students. The, the special ed buildings are gonna be decorated in a fashion that they know. That is signs, balloons, galore. And the staff went and delivered for all four high schools, the cap and gowns for every student. So they have it in their home and they're gonna wear their cap and gowns in the cars when they go for this drive-in, drive-by parade. So I wanna extend to all the staff, if we have staff joining in the board meeting tonight, to thank you. You've worked very hard to make this a special moment for these students. We thank you for that. And briefly, two other, two other comments. We've established an opening of school reentry committee. We've gotten representations from all of the respective bargaining units. We're, we're gonna have a transparent process here. We're gonna have involvement. We're gonna ask staff to help solve the problems related to reopening a school. And there are many and they're significant. And every school is facing that. We have some unique needs with our special ed population. We have nearly 1,000 students. As the board knows, many of these students have underlying serious medical conditions. So there are very significant, serious issues that we're gonna have to tackle. We did get a little bit of a surprise on Friday. Friday afternoon, the governor issued an executive order where he has authorized school districts to offer special education services, including instructional services for students with disabilities. However, the executive order listed an effective date of June 5th through July 5th. And typically, summer school sessions are held in July and August. So we need to clarify that. And the other piece of information that was important, in the executive order, it did not include Bosse's. So we did receive a number of phone calls expected from parents yesterday on Monday. The order was newsworthy. And we, along with the State Education Department, are seeking clarifications as to whether or not that executive order applies to the Bosse's throughout the state. And we can't respond until we get that clarification going forward. So any questions from the board about those two other issues I can address?
No, I, I don't know how it would affect Bosse's, but a couple of days ago Cuomo said that that the, the schools can have graduation outdoors, but only 150 people. You got more than 150 people, students, so you're gonna have to have more than one graduation. So I don't know how that's gonna be worked, worked out, but that's what he said.
Well, you know, I think for districts that are upstate, 150 can work. But on Long Island, it really doesn't. I mean, you think about it for, you know, it's high school ceremony, you have teachers, administrators, custodians.
And you got more than 150 kids?
Right. So for smaller districts, I think it is a solution. But most districts are going with a combination of some type of drive-in, drive-by or virtual ceremony. A few have held out. Hope that the restrictions might be listed, lifted later on in the summer. If that was the case, they're exploring the possibility of doing in-person ceremonies at that time. It's more complicated because schools are closed and you, you know, staff has to be available. Students, families have to be available. But I, I'll tell you that every superintendent, every staff member, every teacher administrator, everyone's working very diligently to make this as memorable and special event for the students. And they recognize that and they appreciate it. So we're doing the best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Great, Warren? Mike, was that it?
That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Warren?
Okay, good evening. Just a, a few brief things just to, to highlight on the, in the area of the capital projects. First of all, you have the report on the update of the various projects that have been budgeted. That report will next month be updated yet again to reflect the new projects that are approved going into the 2021, 20, 2021 budget. And currently, we're moving along. There are really three areas that work is currently going on. We have two roofing projects going on. One is essentially finished. We expect the other one to be completed within the next week. And we're continuing to work on the parking field lighting. And in those areas, we have some poles to replace and some outdoor work to do. So we expect to finish that, not too, not too far down the road. In turn, there's a resolution, as you noticed tonight, to approve some additional capital projects that we are able to find funding for in the current year's cycle. And those involve mostly electrical work to upgrade our electrical systems at several of the, the buildings at Wilson Tech, Tex Hills, based upon our engineering appraisals and evaluations of those things. We've also put in there $250,000 to allow for some of the health and safety modifications that we feel will be necessary. We're particularly focused on the additional bathroom work to replace all the manual faucets, manual flushometers and those kinds of things. We're looking at the issue of automatic door openers, which because of building codes and things creates some issues, but we're looking at that and that's what that funding is, is allowed for. In addition, as you know, we have a big bathroom renovation bid to award tonight.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah, it's a big one. It's a big one. It's well, the budget, which is a good thing. And of course, timing matters cuz we wanna get this work started during the summer while the buildings are unoccupied. This, this work is gonna be done in stages. It's not gonna be all done in the summer. It'll be done in stages throughout the year as, as the situation permits. And I'd be glad to answer any questions now or get back to you, so.
Any questions for Warren?
Nope. No.
Thank you, Warren. All right, so we're gonna get items for board action. I'm going to just bear with me a minute. I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna ask for a motion for items 9.1 to 9.18, 9.3 to 9.3.15. So it can get a motion. That's a Jeanette, second?
Second. Second.
All right, Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good, that passes. So we're gonna make, I need a motion now to remove item 9.2.11 from item 9.2. You can get a motion to remove that.
So moved.
Peter?
Second.
Jeanette, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. So we're gonna get, we're gonna move items 9.2.1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13. Get a motion. Eileen, second?
Second.
Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes, to unanimously.
11 to 11.
All right, and now we're gonna vote and move on item 9.2.11. Can we get a motion for item 9.2.11?
So move.
So Jeanette, second? All right, Eileen, any opposed?
Me, Peter.
Peter. Peter opposes 9.2.11. Come, so we have, the motion will pass with enough votes and so that 9.2.111 passes. All right. Any old business? And just on the old business, though, we're just welcome Jim Caden in. Jim, hello, we won't hear you, but we'll wave to you. Welcome to the Bosse's Board. Oh, you, we'll, we'll see you officially next month. So. But welcome to our Zoom meeting today. And new business, as we're gonna review and adopt policy number 3321, Professional Staff Fringe Benefits, Central Office Administration. If you've had a chance to review it, any questions? And why don't we do this? I'm gonna review and add that policy 5152.1 attachment Bravo B, Unit 6, Unrepresented Staff Summary of Benefits. Any questions? Can we get a motion to adopt policy 3321 and policy 5152.1? So, Peter is.
Second.
Second, Jeanette, any questions? Motion passes unanimously. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Jeanette? Second?
Second. Eileen?
Eileen, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone, thank you. We will see you in July. Thank you for joining us on Zoom and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye. Stay safe.
Thanks, everybody, please. Thank you. Okay, now I have to get off. Leave.